I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting, North Royal Village, on Monday, December 21st, 2020. Rocco.
Trustee Carol?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Gaffino?
Here.
Trustee Gaitley?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
And Mayor Berman?
Here. Any audience comments?
I did not see any, Mayor Berman.
Trustee comments? Item number one under discussion.
Mr. Telf. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one under discussion is going to be a Tiff facade grant program rebate request, and Mr. Telf is going to take us through that.
Yeah, as you know, the North Royal Tax Financing Grant Program provides a 50% match up to $20,000 for properties within a Tiff under the Tiff guidelines. Sharon Carriage is located at 12 John Street, is seeking a Tiff facade grant program in the amount of $12,216 for a project that would, is a total cost in $24,432 for an entryway, a covered entryway or canopies as part of entryway and facade improvements on their north building facade. They've since got a building permit, they've submitted the two proper bids, just looking for any feedback from the village board.
Looks good.
Yeah, we're good to go.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with it.
It's nice to see our businesses along here taking advantage of this.
Right.
Yes.
You know, especially during these times, everybody's thoughts are on someplace else, not necessarily improving the business, so very good. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two on the agenda is a special use request for 307 Banbury Road, which is currently Chapel Street Church. Mr. Telf is going to take us through it, but the reason they're in front of the board tonight is they require special use approval as they're looking for an expansion and thus an intensification of the use, which requires a special use.
Yeah, very quickly, Chapel Street 307 Banbury is looking to add 3,000 square feet and renovate their 5,000 square feet of existing space from the former Cornerstone Church. They have the right to conduct the business in their current facility as a place of worship. As you know, the expansion of the facility constitutes more than 25% of the ground floor area of the existing facility, so therefore triggering the site plan approval process, and also too being that a place of worship is a special use, the expansion of which is going to require a special use in of itself. So the two items we had motions on from the plant commission for unanimous approval were the special use for the expansion of the place of worship and then the site plan approval. There was one condition added to the approval was that one shade tree shall be provided at the north and south end of the easternmost parking aisle. We did have two members of the public log on in the meeting, they just had questions relative to the screening of the HVAC, which was proposed in the north end of the building, and then the location of the parking, and both questions were satisfied both by the village and the petitioner. So at this point in time, I want to go ahead and introduce Patty Bernard, who is going to walk through a presentation regarding the petition tonight.
Good evening. My name is Patty Bernhard, I'm with Rose Nova and Whitaker, and with me tonight I also have Abe Donso, who is the Executive Director of Operations for Chapel Street Church, and Marcos Rodriguez, who is the Project Engineer with Aspen Group. Can you turn it to slide two, please? Thank you. The location of the property is 307 Banbury Road, it is across the street from the Schneider Elementary School, if that sort of helps you out. It has Chestnut Street on the south and Hickory is on the east, Flagstone is on the north. The property is currently zoned, are one single family residential. Under the comp plan it is, has a designation of public and semi-public use. It is 2.19 acres, you can see it on the aerial here. It's kind of an irregularly shaped lot. The church, the existing church is on the west side. The area that you see that is sort of grayed out is kind of like a large basketball court, and that's kind of the area that they're looking to expand into. And then you can see there's parking that surrounds it. The other thing of note that you can see is that there are some fairly mature trees that also surround the parcel on the residential lots in the area. A little bit of the history that, I'm sorry, the church was donated by Cornerstone Church, but it is too small for my client's ministry, and this is also their fourth location. Can you turn it to slide three, please? This is the existing church, and it is currently approximately 6,000 square feet. It is a permitted use as a place of worship, and as Mr. Telf stated, we are seeking a special use for the expansion of that use. We're also seeking site plan approval because we are looking to put an addition on that is greater than 25%. The existing building, as I stated, is 6,090 square feet, and the, my client is looking to renovate about 5,000 square feet of the interior of the church. There's parking currently located on the lot, and there are 60 spaces, which is actually, I think there's 61 spaces, 60 spaces are required because they have a 237-seat sanctuary, and for every four seats, one space is required. So 61 spaces, there is enough parking, but with the addition, we are actually going to be adding some parking as well, and to the tune of having 70 spaces instead of the 60 required. There's going to be new construction of 3,100 square feet. Can you change it to the next slide for me, please? You can see here the existing building is on the, the west side of the property, and they're looking to construct the addition, which is approximately 3,100 square feet, on the east side of the property. This sort of grayed out area that you can see that runs all the way over to the parking lot right now is currently a basketball court. So what the, what they're looking to do is to use a lot of that basketball court space for the area for the addition. There will be a grassy area here, and then this will be parking, the dark gray area is going to be parking. The addition will be immediately adjacent, it will be approximately the same height, no higher than the existing building. And as I stated, they're using a large part of that basketball court, so there will be a very, very small increase in impervious surface here, approximately 1% on the increase in impervious surface. The basketball court that was existing will also help with those additional parking spaces that I mentioned that they'll be able to fill in. This used to be a basketball court, this dark gray area, and that is going to be the additional, some of the additional parking. Can you turn it to the next slide, please? The next slide shows the renovation that is going to be done on the interior of the building. The worship space will be increased to a size of 237-seat sanctuary. The lobby area is going to be improved to include a coffee bar, some family, family room area, some additional office space, and some restrooms. And that's going to be the renovation for the interior of the existing building. The new construction you can see is over on the right side of the screen, and that new construction is going to have youth ministry classrooms, not daycare, as someone had previously asked, it's youth ministry for the church. You can see that there will be a kids' check-in area, there are some flex classroom areas, there's a nursery, preschool, and then a kid's space for worship as well. And additionally, some storage, which of course, everybody always needs that additional storage. If you go to the next slide, please. The next slide shows the exterior elevations. You can see the, the south elevation, which is the front of the church, will, is going to be very similar to the existing church that's there, they're going to use the same brick, the same roof, use the same type of windows, the same doorways, that type of thing. They will try to match the existing church as much as possible. And can you go to the next slide? Okay, and the next slide is just basically our final slide, we are thankful for the plant commission's unanimous approval, we do agree to those additional trees that they have asked for. We are working with Schneider School across the way, there's always been an agreement in place, I believe, between Cornerstone Church and the school in order to assist each other when there was overflow parking needs, so we are going to work with them additionally in order to try to get that parking agreement in place. My clients, you know, probably have three to five employees, hours Monday through Thursday, nine to four, and then on Sunday from nine until noon, those are the anticipated hours, and we're here, my team, to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I think it looks great, I think it's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it looks fine.
I'm fine with it.
Good.
I'm good.
Hey Mike, Mike Telf had a question, what was the parking concern the neighbors had, or you said it was answered, what was that?
I think some of the, I think the resident that logged on had asked, had assumed that the parking lot would be expanded further to the east. We just corrected him saying that the existing parking would not go any further in the east than what's, what's currently there right now. Any spaces will be added, you know, along the line between the existing building, the addition and the existing parking space.
Was there any additional landscape to screen the parking or anything, or?
We, the condition of approval was one that staff put in, there was additional shade trees at the terminus of the aisle, the drive aisle, which is the easternmost, which is shown here on the, on the, I can't really point you right now, but just additional shade trees in the area right now where there aren't any.
Yeah, my only concern, I've been at a few houses on Hickory Street, and you know, yeah, you can see, you know, you got kind of the mixed use there with the parking and homes and families and things. What was the other question, too, were you running a roof, AC or the HVAC?
No, there are some HVAC units that are proposed on the north end of the addition area, and someone had asked if those were re-screened, which they will be. I don't believe the, 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 it's only more than I believe speaks to required screening in residential districts, it does for industrial business, but matter of fact, they are screened.
Will there be any noise issue between that and them homes just to the northeast of it, you think?
Well, they.
As far as, as far as the air conditioner and stuff running and things?
Well, the actual plan itself, it exceeds the required setback of 10 feet, you're showing, you're showing basically 25 feet to the property line, and in that area too, there may be some trees in the, around the existing property, so you have a setback that's double what is required by code for that area.
Okay. That's all I had.
It's actually in the landscape plan, Dave, if there's, I forget which slide it is.
Any other?
I'm very happy to see the growth in some of this worship facilities, you know, I think it's something needed, you know, for the youth, especially, especially in more of the stars, I really like that.
Well, again, history, the church was larger before there was a fire, so it's coming back to its more regional side.
Yeah, I believe in 2006 it burnt down, and that's the existing foundation that you see is the basketball court, I believe that's the old church site.
Well, I'm happy to see it getting back to where it used to be.
Any other discussion? Thank you for your presentation. Item number.
Oh, Kid of the Year. It says Kid of the Year.
Item number three.
See. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three, very similar to the last item, is coming back to the board, it's an expansion of an intensification of use. So basically, Veralife is looking to expand the current medical and adult marijuana dispensary in town, and because the use hasn't changed, but the size is changing, it's triggering the special use process from the board. With that, Mike Telf is going to go further into their application.
Yeah, I think Steve hit on the important parts, and December of 2019, the village board approved a special use for Pharmacan to allow for the adult-use cannabis dispensing organization on the subject property. Right now, they're looking to expand the tenant space to basically fulfill their existing demand, which would give them a total square footage of 3,578 square feet. And then basically, again, they have the right to conduct the business in that building as a, as a special use per their current special use, it's just the fact that the expansion necessitates the additional special use, because they're basically doubling size at that point. Again, the plant commission did review this petition on December 1st via public hearing, the plant commission did unanimously recommend approval of the petition. There were three conditions that were added at that point in time, or actually added by staff originally and concurred with the plant commission. That was that the dumpster enclosure shall be gated on the fourth or south side, there are dumpster enclosures in the property, but the south side of the enclosures are not gated, which is required per code. Number two condition is basically just a refuge should not be accumulating on site or above the enclosure, this is just a general code requirement that we want to codify in this ordinance. And item number three is that the owner shall regularly monitor all onsite parking conditions to ensure adequate parking for all businesses, tenants at all times. If you recall, January 1 of this year, leading into the preceding weeks and probably a couple months, there was high demand for the product there, and there was a high, high volume of traffic, and they did have onsite temporary traffic control, which was effective, but no longer needed at this point, but they, we do ask, they still effectively monitor the property, making sure that all the tenants have adequate parking for the parking needs. There were no public comments at the plant commission meeting, rather just the plant commission asking the petitioner of some of the logistics of the expansion and the use. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katrina McGuire, legal representation for Pharmacan, to go over through the brief presentation.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Hello, everybody, this is Katrina McGuire from Thompson Coburn on behalf of Pharmacan, it's nice to see everybody again. You're approved, as Mike mentioned about a year ago, for the establishment of the adult use dispensary at this location. I'm here this evening with Bill McMenamy, and I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about the details, but essentially, as Mike mentioned, we are looking to expand within the existing building, essentially doubling our space in order to better serve our customers and operate a little more effectively out of that location. Bill, do you want to go ahead?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees for taking the time out to hear Pharmacan this evening. As Mike Telf pointed out, we are looking to expand within our existing location, and first and foremost, that would give us the opportunity to serve our patients and customers, our existing patients, customers accurately and effectively, but more importantly, help our operation as we expand into the adjacent space. We've made a tremendous improvement since, since January 1st, since the legalization of cannabis, and we've added technology to help aid in that patient and customer experience. And first and foremost, I want to just kind of highlight how we're doing that, and that's through our online platform, so e-commerce, so very similar to shopping on, on Amazon, or if you use Starbucks mobile order app. We've introduced since January 1st, on and around the middle of March, our online reservation and e-commerce platform, and we require that of all of our medical and recreational customers who come into our dispensary at North Aurora. And it's real simple, you make your selections at home when it's convenient for you, or perhaps when you're at work, and you make your selections, and then you simply reserve a time to come down to the dispensary, and you still cannot pay for your product online, that transaction needs to happen within the dispensary. And if I could ask you to advance the slide, we've also added our online, our digital payment app, and this allows our customers to download a personal QR code, which they, prior to coming to the dispensary, they load their banking information, debit card checking account information online, and that gives them their own personal QR code, and they can bring that into the dispensary to complete their, their purchase, again, after making their reservation. And then if you could advance the slide one more time for us, please? And this is kind of the overview of how the expanded dispensary will look. For the most part, I'll just draw your attention to the right, we are putting in place a secure product storage, which is our vault, we're expanding that, and you'll see there the, the processing of the online orders, so we're increasing our capability as an e-commerce provider of cannabis to process those orders effectively and efficiently. We're also creating a proper break room and workroom for our team members to, to, to rest in, have their lunch, socialize in a, you know, post-COVID environment, and then of course, adding a proper general manager's office. I'm directing you over to the left side of the page, for those of you who have been within the dispensary, the dispensing floor, the dispensing floor is very tight, very tight space, how it is now, and it's shaped like an L, with roughly five POSs, and we're repurposing the space, we're expanding the POS to 10, and that allows us to properly service our patients, customers, but be incredibly efficient in combination with our reservation system and our digital payment app. It allows us to turn the customers over if they use that methodology in about a minute and a half to two minutes, and just the experience is just so much better for the customer-patient, and ultimately, as you've seen since April, of the community at large. So it's really just about right sizing the existing dispensing floor, setting it up properly, so that way we can have an efficient and effective patient and consumer experience. I appreciate you taking time to listen to our presentation, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. Is the, is the area to the left, is that what is, exists at this moment?
It does, it's a great question.
The area to the right is your expansion.
It is, so we're bumping out into the expansion area, but the area to the left is very much as it looks currently today, with the exception of how we would lay out those point-of-sales, we would change those a little bit, you know, to be a straight line instead of the L, and then it just allows us to have a much, a much more cohesive experience within the dispensing sales floor.
I'm fine with it, I think it's a good idea, looks good, I like the design.
I have a question for staff, have we gotten any more complaints from the adjacent tenants in that building, I mean, have, have most of the issues been resolved regarding, you know, lines and parking, trash?
Yeah, we have, we have not, in fact, too, I think we asked Chief Fisher today if they've had any issues or calls there, and I don't think it's, also shares the same sentiment, it's been pretty quiet. Obviously, obviously, there was a lot of demanding at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the year was very trying, but it had since kind of quieted off as the year went on and other dispensaries opened.
Well, my, my concern is, you know, when they expand and COVID ends, are we going to go right back to that, are we going to, I just want to, you know, make sure that we're putting safeguards in place so that we, we're being respectful of the adjacent business owners.
That's a, that's a great challenge, trustee Curtis, and I appreciate you asking, and so, believe it or not, our transaction volume has remained very similar to what it has on January 1st or the first month, the first month of legalization, and we've gotten, as I mentioned, we've learned, we've gotten better, we've taken, we've accepted the feedback from our tenants, you know, our partners there at the site, as well as the community, and made the requisite improvements to be incredibly efficient at processing transactions. I will tell you that wherever we operate in Illinois and Massachusetts, in adult cannabis, we have the very, very similar result. The amount of lines that we have have gone down dramatically, and how we, how we operate is infinitely more efficient than it has been in the past. Yes, there have been more dispensaries that have opened, but in total, our average transactions, the total of our average transactions has remained very similar, we've just gotten much better at operating our business, and hopefully, the complaints or lack of complaints that you're hearing are reflecting, a reflection of the effort that we've put in, and we'll continue to get better each and every day. We just want to be a good, a good neighbor in the, in the community, and we're continuing to improve.
Thank you.
I like.
I really appreciate that, I really appreciate that, being a good neighbor with the community and making an effort to streamline the operation, so perhaps it causes, this moods out the impact causes in that area, and I'm glad to hear everything is going well, thank, thank you for that input.
My only comment is the recommendations from the plant commissions, those three items, Mike, has that have been a problem the last nine months? I'm assuming some issue or went down here, I suppose, but I remember we had that issue first three months, and with potholes in the parking lot, I know it's not really related, it's the landlord versus the business inside, but has any of that been remedied, or what, put in the same here, how, are we going to monitor it more, or what's, what's the angle on that?
Well, it has, the dumpster enclosure was added per the original condition of approval, the potholes have been filled, again, those conditions would still apply to the existing use, but in this case, the, the gates were not put up, which is why it was added now.
Okay.
Because, and again, the, just, just a, just a general statement of monitoring traffic, I've driven through the site, you know, several times, just to get a sense, you know, when this petition came about, I have a lot of open parking spaces, I've not seen any issues, and I don't know if the petitioner can speak to this, but I think medical patients have the ability to park up, aren't they still the ability to park up front? So between their online applications and their ordering, I think they've got their, their logistics down to a point where they can get people in and out of the site pretty quick.
It's correct, medical patients can still park up top, and we asked that the recreational patients park in the back, I think, Mr. Telf, you noted in our last meeting, we've also made improvements to our onsite security, who are very much customer-focused, patient-focused, to help direct traffic at the site as well.
Do you anticipate additional employees when you're adding extra point-of-sale, so will you have more required parking?
No, no, our employees are fairly static, we have more employees in the current site than we do have POSs that we can open and operate, and so it would just be repurposing our labor to meet, to meet the current need that we can't, we can't meet in the existing space with the existing layout that we have, so no, no additional employees.
I find it ironic that the two special uses on our cow were, one, the expansion of a church, and the other, the expansion of legalized marijuana in the village.
So back to question three, I didn't get finished there, but, so you expect the property owner to monitor onsite parking conditions, ensure adequate parking, what, what kind of teeth is in that, and who's that affecting, Pharmacan, or how's that work, Mike?
Well, the property owner owns the property, he's responsible for his tenants' activities, so what's going to happen is by this, we just have something to fall back on in the event that there is traffic onsite. So what's going to happen is by this, we just have something to fall back on the event that there is traffic onsite. Um, or if there's any other parking issues or or complaints from tenants. Uh, but again, that was an issue that came up originally, you know, you
Oh, right.
Business in there that couldn't park uh because their employees couldn't park on site, and that has not been the case in several months that we're aware of. Uh, this is just a general statement that they just continue to monitor all spaces onsite because there are several tenants in this property.
Right. Do they do that, or have they been doing it?
Well, they don't have a, they don't have a third party, I don't believe anymore, um monitoring parking. I don't know if it's been necessary. Uh, but why that's for, that's why as of right now, we're putting on the property owner, not the business tenant.
Yeah, because it's back when this all started, remember several of that, when it was insurance person came in and said the place smelled bad and uh no parking and all that. So, you know, as far as respecting neighbors as well as uh other businesses there. So, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion? I think it looks good. I think that's a feeling.
Yep, that's looks good. Yes.
All right, moving on. Item number, well, let's see, we're done with our discussions, right?
Yes.
We need the motion to go to executive session to review existence session minutes dated ten five two thousand and twenty and review a release of executive session minutes. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to executive session. Everybody, goodbye.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Uh, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Everyone.
Thank you.